Roger.
Roger. You may notice.
What was email?
Yeah, it's uh, it's over, yes.
Gracious Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come before you today. We just give your name praise and give you honor and give you glory. We give you thanks. We ask that you can just continue to protect us, lead us and guide us every step in the direction of the way. God touch our first responders and all that they do, we are grateful for them. God and everybody else and our constituents of the town. Allow us to continue to propel this town forward in the right direction. And it's in Jesus' name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a quick roll call. We're gonna start right here on the end with Councilman Allen Rodriguez.
Here.
And next in line is Justin Flowers.
Here.
And Courtney Whitaker.
Here.
Okay, we do have the mayor, Charles Sheifer.
Here.
And we have Councilman Ty Askin.
Here.
And then Selina Taro.
Here.
Okay, this evening, I just wanted to make one quick statement. This is a special meeting continuing with our budget review. This is an ongoing process. You've got a council here that has two council members that have been in here for more than a year, almost two. You've got three brand-new council members. This is the first-time budget review for them. You have a mayor who's been in the office for about eleven months now, have not had the opportunity to work with a council on a budget. And same thing, you have a clerk who has never done a budget for an organization. So this is an ongoing process. We're gonna work through it as best we can. It is a special meeting. We don't expect comments from the audience. The council will be able to express their opinions and whatever they feel is pertinent to the line items that we're going through. And right now, the process is such that the clerk and the mayor have put together, as best we can, a budget that shows where we've spent money in the last year, where we have accounts receivable, and what we have here in the, in the, in the town of New Brockton. But it is the council's responsibility to review that and then pass that budget as they see what they feel is the budget that needs to operate this town. Having said that, I'll ask for any comments from any of the council members before we get started. Now, Mr. Rodriguez.
I have nothing at the moment.
Mr. Flowers.
Not at this moment.
Ms. Whitaker.
No.
Mr. Askin.
Same.
Next. And nothing.
Nothing.
Okay.
Not yet.
Not yet. Then we did start, to some extent, going down the administrative budget. I guess we would call this page one. And either I can, I'll go down by line item. I think, I'm sure some numbers that members of the council would like to review or comment on.
Mayor, I just think we should kind of front-load the fact that a lot of what we did previously was based on the fact that we thought we were over four hundred thousand dollars in the hole, which we have since found out we're not.
We're not quite that bad off, that's correct.
So I just wanted to put that out there before we got started.
Thank you. Mr. Flowers.
Yeah, I think that's, that's huge to definitely highlight. Last meeting, we were, for those that were not here, we were looking at the budget and the financial health, financial metrics of, you know, the budget and, you know, the overall forecast of the town. And when you see numbers that are greater than two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in the negative, we know that, you know, in reasonable man theory, we're not gonna have a town within two years if we keep going in that direction. However, we, we since then noticed that there was a mistake that was made and we lacked several hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, as a mistake or, you know, I don't know to whose fault. But however, now it shows that we're in the negative forty-six thousand dollars. So you go from four-hundred and something to forty-six, that changes the ballgame. So I think that's imperative and paramount for you all to know. You know, I know it's rumors out there, hey, police departments are being dismantled, all this other stuff, and that's just simply untrue at this moment. So I think that's imperative that you definitely bring in on that.
That's fine. Like I said, this is a work in progress from a new team. So we're gonna push through it as best we can. If you would want to start then on what we looked at. Line eight on this page is, I don't see any problem, anything that we can do about it. It's the Alabama League of Municipality News. The second item is streetlights. And that's basically, maybe haven't changed from Alabama power. The weather siren, which is still, from what I understand, under repair. But that's a, an annual requirement, annually billed. The, we talked about the power in the Old Town Hall. And that's a, that's something that we can, I think, delete, we can turn that off. And I'll look at the water, I haven't dealt with the water company yet, so. The park, restrooms, I don't think we're gonna get any relief on those. Main tall, main town hall building, I don't think we're gonna get any relief on any of that. Traffic signal, for, for, you know, we're looking at probably closer to three-hundred dollars a year, not the four oh four. That's a, that was, all those are estimates.
Was that, I'm sorry, was that one of the, one of the things that we were talking about removal?
We are.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I had.
And that's the signal light, the traffic light that's downtown, right in the center.
Just make sure it's just a four-way stop. In fact, that was. Bobby Uke Banks does the Christmas tree item. I think that, that again is probably closer to the five-hundred-dollar range, not the six. Again, that was a estimate. These are mostly all estimates. Whether we want him to do that or not, or try to ensure that the job is done by a part of the maintenance team, city workers.
Absolutely, that's agreeable. We need folks on these versus the parks.
Okay.
I mean, that's on Christmas decorations. If we have one left over, then that's something we consider right now, if we're in.
Okay. I'll go back over this as we go down. Auditorium fees, I don't think we're gonna get away from that. It's gonna be in the six-thousand-dollar range. Same thing with any of the mileage reimbursement is gone. That's a zero, that's right. I mean, this is zero. That would have to be, I think, a call later in the year, depending on how the budget is going.
Mayor, I think Eric wants you to speak up, he's having trouble hearing you.
I can't hear him, but the air conditioning isn't in.
Okay, I thought it was. You wanna turn it off? Or step back over here, or what?
No, I just came right here.
Okay, I'll try to speak up.
We did, we did agree on canceling the, or do you wanna leave with the Christmas decorations?
Yes.
Okay.
Not the decorations, how they're, how they're.
Of the U.K.
How they're put up.
Oh, okay.
I think we can do that with the, the maintenance of the street.
So just to be clear, right now, we're focused on line Bravo or column, column Bravo, B.
Actually, between B and C.
The range of both programs?
Yeah. Because the column D was an incremental increase. And again, an estimate. I think the. Say again.
So do we have Christmas decorations and the tree removal in the same, coming out of the same thing? I mean, I don't think it's fucking anything.
No, that's gonna be, tree removal is separate and falls under our gas taxes. As long as it's in a position where it's either hindering the public or traffic.
So are we allotting an amount for that? We had, what, two trees removed and pay us a couple of months? So is that something we need to?
Not under the general administrative budget. We had the one tree, just for history speaking, the one tree, a very large tree came down on Dawkins. That took them like four days to remove it. They charged us five thousand dollars, which was the lowest price at the time. The tree that came down last Sunday on Fitzsimmons, he charged us fifteen hundred dollars to remove that one. Took them about a day and a half. But it was definitely, that, that one took out more power lines. So it was more of a rapid response type of thing. Number twenty-eight, I think, is a decision to be made during the year, depending on budget constraints. So nothing is scheduled for that. The auditor fee, probably somewhere around the six thousand to less than sixty-three hundred. We're not gonna get away from that. The credit card bills, I don't see us. I think the column C items are probably gonna be a good budget item. But I think, you know, again, putting some constraints on how we look at what we're spending. And we're trying to cut back right now with the city department.
Oh, for line thirty-seven, the Visa card, you've gotta look in column B. That should be twenty-seven hundred, not twenty-seven thousand. I think that's a typo, so just make sure.
I think you're right.
You change that when you figure it out. It could be different.
Seaspire, for the town and for the park, I don't think we're, as an estimate, item C is probably still a good estimate. Juror County, that's probably, again, a good estimate in column C. There shouldn't be anything else left with the Juror County. Because, I mean, we don't have a contract with them or anything like that. That was mainly helped during the transition, whatever the mayor, the former administration stopped over.
Well, it did, in fact, see the, the so-called contract that they had, it's just a written document, but they haven't, they haven't done anything.
Okay.
She hasn't carried anything that's on there.
Okay, so that could be taken off, yeah.
Okay, on line forty, it says contract expired. Did we remove that?
It's a, for the wifi in the park? Yeah, that's an ongoing contract.
Did we remove the contract?
I can't say that, yes or no, but I'm pretty sure it's a.
It is a contract.
Pardon me?
It is a contract.
It's a continuing contract.
It was coming out of the Oracle phones at one point in time. And it was a agreement that we set ago, the wifi in the park.
Yeah, we saved. Take a note on that one. I think that's still happening. Maintenance supplies, I don't, I don't have a problem with that at the two-thousand-two-hundred, two-hundred-and-twenty. Ambulance coverage, I don't think we're gonna get away from that.
Okay, I'm so sorry. Line forty-two, it says reorder deposit slip. It's nine eighteen and then it's zeroed out. So that was a one-time fee? We're not, we don't order that yearly? So we can take that off?
Well, I order checks one time for the year now. But just to me, I ordered enough to last for the whole year.
So how many, I guess the question is, how many checks you got left?
A stack.
So we can mark that off as a one-time fee?
One-time fee.
Okay. And then mark out the reason?
Yes. Again, the supplies for the town. That's basically cleaning supplies, toilet paper and hand wipe, hand paper. Ambulance coverage, I don't think we're gonna, that's not gonna change as far as we know. I don't see any, the possibility of a slight increase is that a hundred-and-twenty-five dollars on the budget above takes into account item C. I think we can leave with the sixty-five thousand and eight-hundred-and-seventy-three. SAM, we can take that off of there. I've been doing research with SAM. SAM is basically a free program from the government. It was a company that assisted us in our reregistration, but we're not going with that, that route at this time. I'm not, I'm gonna go right back into the SAM webpage.
So line fifty-three, we're just continuing.
Yes. I'm going right back into the SAM webpage and the federal support, federal support department, FSD, to reregister for SAM. The nineteen-hundred dollars for town hall security cameras, shouldn't be very close to that. Hudson Office Supplies.
So that's, that's, that's full pay for town hall street repair, is that what they're gonna do?
Hi, Sam.
We have a monthly contract with them for the cameras?
I'm not sure what gets paid out of it. Eric, I don't know, you'd have to ask Eric, please.
We don't have a monthly contract. That was that one time that they came out to repair the cameras.
Okay, then that's, well, that was a one-time repair, so we might be able to. Hudson Office Supplies at, I'd like to put that in at, I had down here to put that in at like four thousand. You can watch on how we, how we order and what we order. I think we've got enough supply, a lot of supplies actually in the town. If I'd like to go with line fifty-seven, I'd like four thousand dollars.
So can you atomize the office supplies that, that you're talking about?
Most of it revolves around the large printer and the contract we have, just the, have, have somebody come in and do full maintenance on the printer. And I'm not sure what that runs, but it's, the high cost is the, what do you call it? Yeah, cartridges, on an annual basis. We could get a, we could get a breakdown.
So just a large printer and you think that that's gonna run us four thousand dollars for it this year?
It's fairly close, yes, sir. We add, and then if he comes out to do any sort of work on it, like they've been out at least three times since I've been here because the printer has, the cartridge is either screwed up or the, again, it's the alignment of the paper was out of adjustment and the copies were made and were all, that's, that's the high cost in, in, I think, in the office supply area. The rest is pens, pencils, paper, manila folders.
Office supply also gives us our bathroom supplies.
Oh, they supply some of that also.
That's what it is. So.
What is enterprise paper and janitorial supply?
They supply us with our green bags for the leaves and pine straw.
Again, with credit card, and I'm not sure exactly which card that is.
It's the gas card for, for the town car.
Town car?
It's for all of them. It's got the police department on it, the senior center.
I think, I have that separate.
Okay. Okay, okay. But it's not just the town car.
We have the town car.
I hear.
I mean, I'm gonna put that in at five hundred. So you should get out of it. Internal Revenue Service taxes? No, wait a second.
Eric, that was on the coffee.
Yeah. Sat by the sidebar.
What line is on there?
The, in the credit card.
Fifty-eight.
Yes. That's fuel for the.
That is for the Ford.
Huh?
That is for the Ford.
Yes. Item sixty-one was a one-time payment. Game Electrical, still a one-time payment. Knox Pest Control, this is a, this is the guy that comes in and sprays the building once a month.
So we have, on Internal Revenue Services, that's a one-time payment? Does it come annually or?
No, that was a one-time payment.
So we won't be charged by IRS no more?
Hopefully not. Stay away from that. Again, Knox Pest Control, if you wish to continue that, that's again, about seven-hundred-and-twenty, sixty dollars a month. They come in once a month and spray the building. The local government health insurance board, I don't think we're gonna change that. The good estimate is still the forty-five thousand.
No, they did fill up, again, I just received notification.
For who?
I do have the blue letter, the prices did increase beginning October first.
October?
For the health insurance. For the health insurance.
Will it increase?
It's just a few dollars, it's not a whole lot. We just don't have the exact.
One-time charge for the new pole in the park? That's for the camera system when Alabama powered and the carts in place to come put that in. Renew the contract. Those are, as close as we can get those numbers. I don't see any change in any of those happening soon. Municipal Workers Compensation Fund, again, I don't see any, any change in what we have as an estimate. Water usage, that is gonna be approximately two-fifty. If we turn the water off in the new, in the old city hall, and that's, that's, I'm sorry, that's not right. That's just water usage in and outside the building. That's probably close. We get a monthly fee of, or standard fee on that. Same thing with the water at the cemetery. I think that's a low estimate. The standard fee, I think, is around twenty-one dollars a month. Anybody looked at, you got a water bill that you're not using?
It used to be like eighteen, but then it was passed on, I believe it was.
Just, yeah, for not using any water, yeah.
Don't forget too, we've had notification from the water department that the park restroom was, the water in the toilet was leaking. So someone used seventy thousand gallons of water.
That's, yeah, but that's, seventy thousand gallons of water is gonna run us just a couple hundred bucks. I know that's a lot of water, but we fixed the toilet today, the other day. Cemetery usage, I still think is closer to two-hundred-and-forty dollars a month or a year. Just on having an account open there for somebody to use it. Water use for the town hall, again, approximately six hundred. Our involvement with the fire department is still wearing five hundred dollars a month, or six thousand. Personal contacts was a one-time, driven time tracks and. one-time, permanent time tracks and business solution, organic guide, so it's all a one-time. I can see us.
Eighty-seven, eighty-nine a whole time?
Eighty-seven, eighty-nine, and only one. Cook's Books is a, uh, ongoing, twenty-four hundred. With the increase. Shirley Law Firm, we have a two hundred dollar a month, uh, payment, um. Sort of on the side, I've, I've asked, incidentally, a couple of people about what he's charging us, um, I think we're getting a good rate from him when we employ him. Who is that? That's, uh, legal fees, number ninety-five. The, uh, two hundred dollars a month, the retainer fee, uh, that's not for him to work, that's strictly for him to answer the phone fifteen times when I call him. You know, or give back to me fifteen times. Uh, he's been responsive, uh, I don't, again, I don't, very little knowledge that I've been able to glean from other people, um, the charges he's charged, the charges he's charging us on exorbitant, the same lease. I think fifty-five hundred is still probably a, an estimate for the annual. We do call him as little as possible, but he will charge us when we call him.
So he charges, or he ever call?
No, he charges if I send him something. Um, if I send him to review a, a contract, uh, review a document that I need a lawyer's opinion on, is when he charges us. No, if I just pick up the phone and ask him a question, uh, it's a part of the retainer fee. I don't see any changes in the splash, shop, slash, dot, Business Council. Or a cocaine fee from Southeast Gas. Southeast Insurance, um, we've got that on working, uh, again, that's, I mean, that's gonna be, with an increase probably close to the forty-four thousand, if you remember, we paid fourteen thousand plus per, uh, payment last year, we were three of those. Voluntary Fire Department Repair, that was a one-time. Stated out of bag, yearly end taxes, four thousand, uh, per year. Here's the one, Steve Catalver, floor and carpet cleaning, uh, that's the one we wanted to talk, I had known it myself. Uh, he comes in and cleans the carpets, strips the, uh, hallways, how many times a year?
Just on an annual basis, he'll come in and check, see what needs doing, and get it done, um, sometimes.
He's done the, just, uh, he's done the police department. Yeah, he did the police department this last weekend, so who knew the other offices?
The next time he comes.
Next time he comes in.
Mm-hmm.
But Eddie, you know, once a year, I think he strips all the hallways, the floor here, and, uh.
So is that included when he does, like, when he splits it up or?
It's all included, we give him a one-time fee and he just does it monthly, and the little receipt we received down at the bottom, it'll say, this is not a bill.
That's his, that's a twenty-five hundred dollar a year fee.
But he always logs on that too, what he does when he comes.
So we can keep that if you wish. Uh, the pins, lapel pins, that was a one-time fee, we've got a whole bag of those remaining. Fire Bank and Trust, we explain what we're doing, we're paying two payments a month. Safety deposit box, twenty-eight dollar fee annually. Treasury and, uh, Treasury and the more deposit fees. I don't see a change in those, we did. Here's a question, are postage stamps that we've been cutting at, we're at five hundred dollars, are you gonna do that annually, you think? Have we, we've cut that in half, haven't we?
Probably, I don't know, I don't count how many stamps I put out.
Understand, but we've done a lot of payment by bill.
We've done some online.
Payment online and, uh, ACH.
What about garbage bill, they're gonna send out the bills or do we have?
Postage stamps, just as a, uh, budget item, I think we can take that down to three hundred dollars because we have almost, cut that in half.
Now, that's a good weather.
Uh, Virtual Academy and Training Courses, I don't see any, any changes in there, um. Is that the, let me ask you that, is that where the council members' courses fall in? That's what I thought, and that would be, for three new council members, uh, close to twelve hundred dollars, that's four hundred and fifty dollars per council member. Alan, you've completed all yours though, haven't you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did my ten hours. A while, but.
So the training courses that are mandatory, uh, I've got a couple that are remaining, and our other two new council members, uh, should be going nine hundred, I'd say close to twelve hundred dollars for this year to finish those courses. That would be without changing any council members. Ma'am?
So we don't need to, I mean, that wouldn't be something we need to budget in for next year unless there's a turnover.
We still have, and I don't know how many you've done, you're just starting, so that's close to four hundred fifty each, plus I got four or five that I'm supposed to be at. So the budget still needs to be somewhere around.
I think, we've got that new, oh, that Governor Ivey passed saying that everybody's gotta be basic CMO certified, that's forty hours of training a piece. So that, that's something we definitely got budgeted.
And I don't know what that cost is gonna be. I'm talking strictly with the new personnel, like I said, yours is done in day four.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good for the year, but starting January, the clock told back to zero again.
To some effect, yeah.
I don't forget I have the election training open, but, but that's gonna cost you.
You know what that cost is?
Did you talk about line one twenty-nine?
Uh, yes.
So that number needs to change.
For the three of us, it's probably still, if we start tendering on with my training and the training you two have to do, it's probably in the fifteen hundred dollar range.
I think we need to com- combine line twenty, one twenty, one twenty-one, and one thirty-four.
One thirty-four. Okay, I can see that. One thirty-one. One thirty-four, one thirty-four. Four, no, one thirty-one, sorry, let me get my hat. The, uh, one, one thirty-four, and you said one thirty-one, training courses and council member training requirements could be about fifteen hundred for what we sit at right now. And we'll combine, we'll change that along those lines and change that. No, that was one twenty-one, wasn't it? Not one thirty-one.
Um, yes, sir.
Okay.
One twenty, one twenty, one twenty-one, and one thirty-four.
Okay, we'll combine one twenty-one and one thirty-four, approximately fifteen hundred. Uh, copy machine lease, don't see any change to that. Civic Plus, uh, this is, I think, our best estimate right now.
Do we, do we owe anything else on that?
We haven't received any bills on that yet.
You already made a, no, so we need to check up on that.
Okay. Until we get Civic Plus, we're still doing the domain name and the QST website. That's an annual, that, that was annual, correct?
Eric? I think we're at sixty-five, sixty-five times twelve.
Line one thirty?
The, uh, under training, ALM Conference, uh, the last ALM Conference, uh, it did cost us with miles lodging meals and the conference itself ran us just under nine thousand. So if that's a item we wanna add in there for budgeting, now that was with one, two, three, four people attending. That was, yeah, mileage of lodging, I'm not sure. But I, the numbers I had for, um, if we stay with six thousand dollars, we can limit the, uh, the attendance to those who need, who really want to attend. I really do think that, uh, if we do, um, budget for ALM conferences needs to be probably at least somewhere between eight and nine thousand dollars. I'm not mistaken, it's four hundred fifty bucks ahead just to attend. Yeah.
That sounds very common, I remember.
And lodging for four days, meals was, uh, not too bad. I don't think we'd be wrong with budgeting for at, at least eight thousand dollars. Next page I have is the administrative payroll for the town hall.
Mayor, I have a recommendation on this. I mean, I've gone over this and that, we need to stick with the baselines first before we go into proposals to gradually to your partner, to your partner individually.
Okay.
And then, once we have the baseline budget of, starting off with no changes, payroll and see what the baseline is, see what is left over, or what adjustments have been made, then go from there. Instead of going forth with proposal right now, let's look at the bu- budget holistically.
Put the, uh, payroll up to another meeting?
Well, not necessarily another meeting, but let's get the base numbers.
Perfect.
And then, gotta have priorities of what's most important.
You mean?
Departments and then what each department provides for us, and then, you know, we have to have a holistic report first because we only got nine sixty-six, seventy-eight for total budget. So if we have a hundred dollars, we can't spend more than a hundred dollars. So before we go into payroll of any type of other proposal.
Are you keeping, you're saying, with your pad, are you keeping running total as you went down?
Yeah, I'm keeping total of deductions of like the admin department first, so we've already got thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and three dollars, let's say just thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and four dollars in reductions.
Okay, out of the, uh, four hundred and forty-three, thirty-three that's on the bottom of, uh, column C?
I'm not even paying attention to that, I'm just going with possible deductions. That we talked about.
Okay.
Each one, each one we've just talked about, I'm thinking, thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and, let's just say four dollars.
Around ballpark, could you subtract that from your column C?
No, I mean, C has the, the increase, increase, let's, let's just do the baseline first and the proposals, let's get a holistic budget and then come back to the proposal increases. If we need to do increases.
So if you're talking that, then you're looking at, um.
Need actual numbers.
Yeah, actual numbers. So, in Tennessee, that's pretty high.
Yeah.
And, uh, that'd be four hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five for actual expenses, expenses of admin. Four, seven, eight, nine, five.
Okay.
And we have nine, six, six, zero, seven, eight, nine, so. Five, we got five, fifty-eight, one eighty-three left in the bank.
Okay, I see what you're going, yeah.
That makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
And let's put, um, as I had papers in front of me, the next item down was the police department, is that correct?
I'd like to backtrack just for a second.
Okay.
To the, uh, to the council member training requirement. I only bring this up, I understand it's not, not a budget issue right now, but it's definitely gonna be next year. Is every council member required to do forty hours of training, which is what the legislation that Governor Ivey passed is forty-five dollars for a one-hour course, okay? That means every, uh, council member is gonna have to do essentially, uh, forty hours of training, so that's forty courses.
Do you know what the cour- I haven't seen anything either through ALM or anywhere else that says what those courses are gonna be, they're gonna cost us.
It's, um, I, I'm only going by what they, what I know they charge now, and that's forty-five dollars a course, if they're gonna give us, uh, some kind of discount, I would kinda tend to doubt it, but, but I, I definitely think that's an expense that we're gonna have to budget for, since it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a statutory requirement now for everybody.
Yeah, with a member.
What did I know you?
I haven't got one yet.
Did anybody else?
So you're talking approximately eleven thousand dollars.
Ten, eight, ten, eight, eleven thousand? Now, you can get credit, like when we went to the ALM conference, we got ten and a half hour credit, and that would count towards your CMO training. But, you know, the conferences aren't cheap either, so they're, they're gonna get you one way or the other.
And if I'm not mistaken, the conference itself costs us four fifty ahead.
Yeah, that was just for the, I think that's for the registration.
That's just registration. That's just registration, that's correct.
So point being that it's gonna be a, a sizable expense, I think, that we have in plan for.
So if over beyond, under, um, council member training, you should, think we should add another ten thousand, eight hundred dollars?
Uh, I think it would be, it would be prudent to do that.
Any other comments from any other council members? There you go. Either under calculator, add that, subtract one thousand eight.
Okay, gotcha.
Did anybody else gather and count up all the numbers to see what your total comes up to?
What are you calculating?
Uh, just going back and like adding all the expenses now that we took off, out any one-time fees, just to see what the new total comes up to.
And I was gonna ask if, if, if it was an actual cost in twenty-four, we're working on fiscal year twenty-five, do we, is it really a one-time cost, or are we gonna have to repeat that again? They're that actual fiscal year, so do we need to budget for it please?
Well, there's a number of items on here that I think are one-time costs. Now, as you go down through, if there's other items you think that were one-time costs that we made?
Annually.
Annually? That, you know, bring it up. Is there anything, we'll, we'll look, we haven't, we haven't moved on yet.
I'm good, I'm good.
You're good with the other two pages?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So we're sticking with that?
Yes. Going down to police department, again, uh, looks like column, whenever that is, the first column, we'll look for the actual cost for two thousand and twenty-four. Wages and benefits, often, I don't see any, any change in that at the moment. Department's computer systems at fourteen hundred. Body cams, we have those, that's a deduct, that's a deduction. And we discussed that earlier.
That was taken off.
The, uh, possibility of, um, budgeting for another vehicle, so that there was a turnover, uh, that's a, that's a loss of the, uh, obviously about forty thousand. I don't see we're gonna, uh, and I know the chief is, uh, watches how he spends on new shirts and uniforms, so I don't see a change there really. We have the quarterly, uh, dispatch fees. The jail food and care, um, I think we can put that at around number, probably close to the, you know, six fifty. And that's all dependent, again, on how many people the department arrests and puts into the jail. But I think that all those prices are gonna go up. Councilini evaluations, um, that depends on the turnover, I don't see where the, uh, three hundred and eleven is on a, where, uh, to exorbitant. Credit card bills, again, for the department, they've been running approximately sixteen thousand, sixteen thousand, five hundred. New communications and, is, uh, is gonna be made approximately the same, I'd say three thousand dollars is probably better, with the cost of everything else going up. Maintain our four vehicles. I'm not sure where we can, uh, cut that, uh, I know the department does have a pretty strict, uh, maintenance schedule for their vehicles. Uh, the major, one of the major costs there is, um, when the vehicle needs new tires. Road, what was, uh, let me ask, what, Chief, what was road mark? Was that a tire? You know what the road mark vehicle maintenance was? Okay, if we, uh, concentrate on, uh, one shot, let's subtract the road mark as more or less a one-time. Southern software renewal, again, I don't see us getting away from that. Police department equipment, Seminole communications, the, uh, armor plating, we were gonna subtract that. The four items on there, uh, wireless. Williams signs, that was a one-time, we shouldn't have to do that this year if we keep all four vehicles. We do have the requirement for artist training. We did have, uh, down here for, uh, police ammunition, wasn't that like a thousand dollars? That, not the four eighty-six that's listed?
Correct.
I've asked the police department, the reason it's a thousand dollars, I've asked them to, uh, not only train once a year, but they have to qualify once a year. And I will say at the last training session, uh, about sixty to seventy percent of the officers showed up. And at the end of the day, nobody shot better than the mayor, so they do need training. So unless you've got any problems with, uh, ammunition, uh, again, it's a, it's a prob- less than five hundred dollars per training session.
Could we change that number from seven eighty-six to a thousand?
Yes.
Okay. I'm good with that.
And again, any of the council members are invited to come out and shoot. I bring the wrong ammo. And the southern radar training, I don't see any changes in that. Second page. Actual, and I know the chief is, uh, been quite diligent about overtime. So I think the actual for the year is probably gonna be fairly close. We've got the health benefits. And, you know, as we budget through this, credit card for fuel. Mileage reimbursement is for mostly, uh, training sessions that the officers attend.
We're going out.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I missed a page. Grabbed the wrong page. Now, that was the, uh, Okay, I, we had a second page there. No, one page, you got payroll. Yeah, no, I thought there was a second page added there, I went to.
I thought he was talking about the payroll.
Yeah, no, I'm bad, we're putting the payroll sheet off, like you suggested. Um, so if we go down with the, your holistic number at three hundred thousand, two hundred and fourteen?
Yeah, change that to three hundred thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine. Three top, three hundred thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine, just cause we added the additional for the ammunition, but then we have fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine.
Yeah, we subtracted forty thousand, the, uh, body cam, the, um, Wasn't that final number yet, huh?
Yeah.
It's wrong, because seven, eight, nine is wrong.
Uh, roughly, roughly about two forty-two, eighty-eight.
Two forty-two. Two forty-two what?
Two forty-two.
No, the, the three hundred is when you add the additional, we increased the amount for the ammunition, so it took the three hundred thousand, two fourteen to three hundred thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine.
Probably took off something.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, now you subtract fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine, it's two forty-two, eighty-eight. Fifty-seven, eight, forty-nine, and I rounded, I just go, yeah.
So, so that, that's what puts us in the green. On our overall, right? Councilman asking, are you tracking with this?
Yeah.
I would recommend that one other person add up these numbers so we can check, but, like, cause mine and Todd's numbers are slightly different, so if we add a thirty percent, we can see what an actual number is. In my opinion, could the, um, road mark number be part of that?
No, we were.
We're cutting that, it's a overtime expense.
Yeah, we're taking that out.
So we're taking off any.
But do we, do we think that, uh, I mean, we're looking at the same projected board, one shot? Or, I mean, do we think that cost of labor and everything is gonna remain the same? Or should we combine the road mark and the one shot, just to give us some?
A little wiggle.
If you, if you wanted to budget, I'd say we need to go to nineteen thousand, uh, maybe, you know, it's a planning number.
Yeah, I, I think it's better to have a little cushion than try and cut it right in the wire.
Um, we ended up having to put an engine in. I remember that's part of that. So we would increase that by a thousand, one hundred and fifty. Item number.
Change it from eighteen, one fifty, forty-eight to nineteen, to eleven?
No, I was looking at, yeah, well, that's, we were looking at the, uh, twenty-two, twenty-four actual, seventeen, eight, fifty, should be a thousand, one hundred and fifty. The change is to nineteen thousand.
Yeah, so just change, change it there to nineteen, gosh.
You follow us, well, without my help? Yeah. We're looking. So now, we're, we're not really doing actual, we don't?
I don't know, that is actual.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, seventeen, seventeen, eight, fifty was the actual, yeah. Um, if we increase, that's seventeen, eight, fifty for the budget by a hundred and fifty dollars, it takes us to nineteen thousand. As budgeting. Correct, any? Did I state that correctly?
You did. So, so the council asking, we would be adding, um, eleven fifty?
I think the confusion is, we're projecting that we're gonna spend nineteen thousand, the actual is that we spent the seventeen, eight, fifty.
Yeah.
That we're projecting, we're gonna spend nineteen thousand.
This is the budget.
Right, so that we're not figuring the actual, we're figuring the projected.
Well, y'all, y'all were keeping the actual though, right?
Right.
Exactly, that's fine.
Yeah.
I just wanted to get the budget out, like, as.
And as we go through the year, obviously, if we only spend fifteen thousand, we have four thousand dollars plus from the end of the year. Surplus. Surplus.
I guess.
You know, I mean, yeah, I think part of this is looking at the actual, and part of it is giving us our best guess, just like the, uh, jail food and care. Um, we're at five ninety-two, but I think prices are gonna go up there depending on how many people actually go into the jail. Six hundred and fifty is probably not a bad estimate.
Is the contract renegotiation coming up with the county on that too, for what they're gonna charge us for housing?
So I'm saying six, six fifty as a, uh, care of prisoners is probably not a government. So you had two forty-two, eighty-eight.
Two forty-two, eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight, plus. Plus a hundred and fifty.
A hundred and fifty dollars, or is it your whole, whole?
Well, no, that's all I'm saying.
Give us one thousand, one hundred and fifty.
Yeah, one thousand, one hundred and fifty, that's like.
Two forty-four, thirty.
Two forty-four, thirty. Any other comments on that page? Gentlemen, what do you have? I'm gonna go off, do a lot of additions, I have a lot too.
We're off, roughly down to three hundred, three thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. Still that straight.
We got, yeah, uh, senior citizen senate center is next. The, uh, regular wages. Don't see any change in the actual or the, uh, increase. In the credit. That's been fairly steady. Mileage reimbursement, we haven't reimbursed you for mileage for a while, have we? We don't plan on doing it next year.
No, I just said, y'all ever get our pocket, it's, we'll be getting.
So basically, that, that line could come up.
Which one?
Unit communications, don't see any change there, the water department, um, I'd decide that was as low as it is today. I didn't really look at that, did, ninety dollars for the actual?
For what?
The senior citizen senate water.
Man, I had to pay that, we thought we received it in the, so it should be zero.
Harvey?
I'd like fifty-four for water.
Per month?
Per month.
So that's a zero, zero, huh? Yes. And I think the, the van insurance, um, I got it back, I don't know, it's, got it, but that's, that's about what it was last week. So if you take the, the base mount, sixty-seven thousand, subtract, um, two hundred and forty dollars?
Why she paying, why she going, why the people paying for it?
Yeah.
All right, so what do we say? One fifty-eight?
One fifty-eight.
Ninety, ninety seventeen, hundred dollars, seventeen, eighty-eight. Sixty-six, eight sixty. Fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four.
Councilman asking, did, are, so are we left with?
Councilman asking, did, are, so are we left with two thirty six four eighty nine?
Um, nine six six zero seven one?
Yes.
Yeah, two thirty six forty nine?
Yeah.
You guys are in agreement?
Yep, yep.
Okay. Next, the last item was the, uh, street department. What was the, uh, Eric, on the street department, uh, you had shop with an asterisk, new.
Yeah, that's what they added, the, uh, all the renovations they did there. That's a new, you know.
No.
Yep, where he did everything, it's what I was on the power charges is now for the shop.
Ah, okay, I see what you're saying. We had the, uh, do you remember there was like one outlet in the building? Yeah, and bad lighting.
Before we did, we didn't get it built, but now we do it.
And the, um, the repairs were all paid for by the, for some of the gas tax. I would like to, uh, as we go down then, uh, drug testing, uh, that did not happen yet. So that's something that I could be missing, probably, I don't know what that costs per person.
For the new hires, when the police officers and stuff come in, they have to go for counseling and drug testing, pretty much all the new hires do.
I'm just not sure what that costs per person, I don't think fifty four dollars for a year was probably just.
That was probably for one drug test.
That was, that was actually for Brian, that was one testing.
Okay. Your officers, when they get, uh, hired, they do a drug test? And we pay for that, or they come out of the police department?
Come out of the, out of general fund.
Out of general funds.
Do we do randoms, or we just do just annuals?
Right now, we haven't done annuals or randoms.
We should be on that one. Every time the police officer gets put tested now, if they involve an accident, in this manner, for they do the drug test.
There's no way for us to enforce a drug free workplace if we're not doing randoms.
Then I need to step up and do that, so if you're looking at doing that, um. What is your, what is your estimate on how many, at fifty four, estimated fifty four dollars a head?
If you do.
I've got one, two. Three, four, five, six, seven. Eight employees, basically. Fifty four times twelve.
Okay, this is the street department budget, so do we need to put that on the administrative budget?
Probably, that would be a good, good call.
Fifty four times twelve is six forty eight.
So we'll add a line.
Eric, Eric is saying that that fifty four dollars is probably an old number. So it may, it may be a matter of reaching out to whoever the provider is and getting an updated cost for a drug test. If we're gonna give it an accurate representation in the budget.
Right, okay.
Hundred bucks a pop, and there's a good time, eight, eight hundred bucks.
And we'll add a line to the, um.
Administrative.
Administrative listing, okay.
For each department.
Huh?
For each department.
No, administratively, it would, it would be covered by.
For the, for the administration department, they said not to use the form yet, because you need them for the street and the public first, for the street and, uh.
No, just, we'll, we'll budget the whole thing under the, uh, administrative.
So we're moving it from street department out?
Helpful, helpful tip, you might wanna contact ALM because I don't think you can only do one person a month. If you do one person a month, that's not random, you're singling someone out.
We, we used to do it in the, back when I worked in law, where they would just draw a number.
Yeah.
And if the last number of your social security number was that number, you got to.
Uh, that would be ran, that would be considered random, but if you're picking, then you're sing, if you're going, okay.
We would, we would have.
John, go get a drug test this month, then you're singling someone out.
We would have to do a random, you know, if you just pick on the street department, they could pick a number between one and three.
Right.
You know?
No, you just.
And then the next.
With a bunch of numbers, you know, one through nine, one, actually, zero through nine, in a bag, pull a number, whoever's social security number ends in that number, they get tested.
What if nobody has a number?
Yeah, then, then that's a month when nobody gets tested.
I think we can stick with how we're doing it later.
Right now, let's just come up with numbers. Let's, 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 we're gonna put it under the administrative at about, uh. Eight hundred dollars.
Yeah, I think that's.
Alright, so again, we're taking it off of the public work, public work, drop?
Yes.
You know, so we're gonna be, uh, two thirty five, five eight, no, two thirty five, six eighty nine now.
For remaining.
Yes.
I said, well, I'm.
Now, on this one, is we, we got more to go, right?
Yeah. Um. The cost of, the next item down is the asphalt bags, um. I would like to budget for at least two pallets, I don't know, I have no idea, we've gone through. At least two pallets of asphalt since I've been here, most of it was bought at ten bag increments from Lowe's. And then we found a better product for just a slightly better price of what we bought that whole pallet for, thirteen hundred dollars.
Okay.
So I'm thinking. From what I have approved, before we bought that pallet of asphalt, and I wanna say that I think they've gone out and done a number of patches. Unless you guys have seen any that we missed.
Are they happy with it and stuff?
Yes.
I haven't heard any feedback.
No, that stuff is much better, it's, uh, much more water resistant, it's easier to handle. It, it doesn't get on their clothes, it doesn't get on their boots, um, and all they have to do is run over it with a truck. Um, so I'd like to put that in the budget there for at least twenty six hundred.
Okay, I have a question, we talked about this earlier. It, we don't pay that out of the general fund, right, isn't that a gas tax that we use that for?
It should be.
If this budget is for the general fund, we wouldn't budget out of this fund.
Correct.
Their general fund account.
Correct, I'm trying to think.
I think you need seven cents.
We did use seven cents, okay.
So we can take that off.
We can take that off then, yep, thank you. Bobby Yanks, uh, tree removal. Um, again, his total cost for the year was, uh, sixty five hundred. Um, I don't know how you would budget for that.
You say who?
Uh, Eubanks.
Was that also gas tax?
Uh, actually, that is, correct, and same thing with Coffee County, uh, road repair. What's that?
Uh, using the, the gas tax to tree remove.
The tree removal is only usable if it is blocking a road and hindering safety.
So if it's something to clear the roadway, that you can use the gas.
We can use it to clear roadways.
That the Ford, it's seven percent.
I think it's the Ford.
Either one. So again, if, if that's the case.
Same thing with the County, Coffee County Commission Road Repair, that all comes out of our gas.
But if that, if that tree removal is coming out of four, seven cent gas tax to clean the roads, then we wouldn't need budget for that.
No, we do not. We have to make sure, and this is, this would be my responsibility, that as we spend, uh, the four and seven cent tax tax on either road repair or other infrastructure. That I don't, um, overspend that.
Right.
You know, we're getting approximately three thousand dollars a month of taxes into those accounts. The, um. It does state though, that you can in an emergency, um, use the general fund and repay. Out of the, the funding as it comes in, but right now, we're sitting very good with, uh, those funds.
So we can cross the.
I think those two items, yeah, Bobby Eubanks and Coffee County Commission.
And drug testing and asphalt, so those four lines can all be mined out.
Yes. The, uh. Lawn equipment and supplies, that's, that's gonna remain constant, about, uh, eleven, eleven hundred dollars a year, hopefully, we're gonna, we're trying to, uh. Eliminate excessive costs as they, as they work around the town. The goose be plumbing electric, um, that's, that was a one time cost. Same thing with, uh, H and H equipment as in doweling, um, depending on which piece of equipment they need to be, be repaired. You know, I'd be hard pressed to say that fifteen hundred dollars would probably be a good budget number.
For which one?
Goosebe plumbing and electric. And doweling tractor and supply at about eleven. I mean, those are two similar items, but they go to two different places.
So eleven for that one?
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred for goose.
Are you talking about ice night or goose?
I'm sorry, goose, no, goosebe was a, uh, one time.
Right, you're talking about ice night.
H and H and, um, doweling.
So was it H and H you wanted to budget fifteen hundred for?
Yes. H and H, the way, the way our equipment is, H and H can work on some of it, doweling works on the rest of it. Um. We do have a very large fuel bill. I don't see any. Almost gas drops.
They're dropping pretty good, yeah.
Yeah. Would remain that, it's almost eight thousand a year. JR's lawnmower, uh, again, depends on the piece of equipment, uh, the, the, the back hole. Uh, goes down to JR's. Where's it go, JR's is, oh, that goes.
Strictly lawnmower. That's the right.
That's right, JR's is the, uh, I mean, sorry, the, um.
Talking about Sun, Sun South.
Sun South. I would like to, uh. Again, JR's, I think we stay at the same. For Lowe's maintenance, I think, uh, that's excessive, uh, personally. I'd like to, uh, I'm, I'm, I'd like to get my hands around that a little better. I'd say drop that by a thousand. We're gonna try to minimize, uh, what costs we have.
Forty eight oh four twelve.
I went that first column.
Yeah, first column, fifty five, drop that to four, drop that to four thousand.
Four L.
We're gonna try to budget that better. The, uh. The old town hall dumpster, that was a one time fee. Uh, the new town hall dumpster, uh, can come out of waste management. Waste management account is, uh, fairly, uh, robust at the moment. But I think that could come off. Cause we're gonna apply that to that account, um, we've got twelve thousand in waste management, something like that?
Yeah, it's.
Oh, no.
Total, the total amount?
Oh, yeah.
One hundred and thirty three thousand.
One hundred and thirty three thousand somehow in waste management.
Yeah, again, but that's, looking at that, that's holistically, it's, that's not what, like, we have just left, and there's gonna be cost of, uh, that's like, over the course of the year, right? We don't have a hundred and thirty three excess in it.
At the moment, we do.
We do?
Yes. It's just sitting in that account. Uh, that's, that's part of how I paid for the dumpster that we put out there on the side of the building.
So that's not out of the trash, is that waste management, is that trash?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're saving that strictly for the garbage when we start building.
Yeah, I guess.
All the equipment is absolutely taken.
We have. We have a hundred and thirty thousand excess, we're not here to be making money off of the trash, just to provide service.
I think that's gonna be a discussion that we see once we do our own building, where we are.
Yeah.
Um, the last month's billing for waste management and trash, we were taking a good three hundred dollars.
I don't take any bills, I don't pay out any bills, I don't deal with the money, don't look at me.
So you didn't ask your question?
They, uh, we took in a little over ten thousand dollars and, and we paid out.
About nine thousand, almost ten thousand.
Yeah, about nine, ninety seven hundred.
We made a little bit of money.
Yeah, so the last month.
There's no way we're making money off of it because we're paying, if we're making money, then it's for the, the three dollar leave and limb fees because. And that's supposed to go towards fixing the grapple truck too.
Yeah.
Because we use the grapple truck for that stuff, so I, I think there's a, a mistake somewhere if there's an excess of a hundred thousand dollars in that account.
We definitely need to look at that.
We definitely, we also look at that. Um, the broken auto parts, um, it's hard to say what we're gonna need, that's what we spent in the last year.
We're losing like forty six cents on each one of the cans.
Say again?
We're taking out both, don't you think?
Uh, yes. I can't say if we're gonna spend more on the vehicles in town than what we already spent. Um. Again, the price of the, uh, main truck, the, uh, Ford, we did have a windshield that went out. I don't know where those, those expenses are gonna drop or not.
But those are just in there once in glass.
Once in glass is, uh.
Yeah, that laser will go down.
Yeah, the once in glasses are one time.
The keys also, that's just a one time.
Yeah, in fact, you can't even go back to Parker Diesel.
Parker Diesel also had a business, so that's just a one time expense.
The, um. And again, I don't understand the difference between the one shot and roadmart, or the difference was there?
Didn't we get keys made?
Arby?
Didn't we get keys made?
Yeah, there's an item down here on Wyndham lumber keys.
Yeah, we got keys made there.
That was just.
From Wynd, Wyndham lumber or door keys, roadmart would have done vehicle keys.
Okay.
So is that a one time vehicle key?
Okay.
I would say yes.
Like somebody lost it?
Yeah. I remember back when, yeah, that was a lot of that.
Cause I know, I think roadmart made street department trucks keys, that could be on the wrong spot. Chevrolet, okay. Chevrolet, okay.
Uh, the backhoe repair, hopefully that is, uh, not an annual fee. I'm not sure if we should budget, uh, additional money for the backhoe repair.
We use the seven cents account for that one.
Uh, we did use it for part of it, didn't we?
For how long?
Did we, for eleven thousand? Okay. And that was, yeah, that was a, uh, road repair equipment. That should probably come out of their total also.
So we were moving in?
Yes.
That's seven cents.
Alright, so that, I got forty-seven thousand, approximately forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five deductions, puts us down to a hundred and eleven thousand, forty-eight dollars.
That very last line.
What you said, one eleven, zero four eight, um, and then the first line, one sixty-three, two-three is where it is. And I accounted for the fifteen hundred dollar change in the Lowe's Maintenance stuff.
I'm just wondering if this Vulcan sign, is that a one-time charge or is that a?
I'm trying to think, um.
Vulcan signs or street signs?
Yeah. We did order some stop signs and some, uh, some street tags. So that's, I'm not sure why it's like five dollars.
If that's lawn equipment.
How much was it?
Fifty-five dollars.
Those are the little corner tabs to hold the street signs up.
Uh, yeah, that's right.
Ask us, can we look at those numbers please?
Uh, yes. I got two hundred and four, uh, two hundred and forty-four thousand thirty. Plus four hundred and eighteen, six nine five. Plus sixty-six, eight six four. Plus one eleven, zero four eight.
But you have the, how am I a street department? No. Forty-four, you said forty-four, so.
Yeah, one.
Yeah, everything was going over so far, that's where it's.
At the street department, uh, low thousand, one hundred, what'd you say?
Hundred and eleven thousand and forty-eight dollars. And the administration was four hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-five. The New Brockton Senior Center was sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four. And the police was two hundred and forty-four thousand.
I got eight forty-six, six three nine.
Say that again?
Eight four zero, six three nine. And the change, that would be.
Eight four six three seven.
Close enough.
Alright, so we're to the good, we're at one twenty-five, four thirty-nine.
Let's, uh, if we're looking at this, we're looking at this nine six six?
Yes.
We need to really take out the thirty-seven thousand from the, this is, this, we do have this, but this is all the gas tax, which is in separate accounts.
Okay.
So it's like thirty-seven thousand.
Thirty thousand, thousand, fifty-four.
Money in the water.
And what is that? I would, with the number that you have, um, this is, you know, we do have income here, but it can only be spent on.
Right, I understand all that, I understand that.
So if we take that away from the, um, nine six six of the total.
So you're saying just take it from this to one hundred and five, four thirty-nine, do the same difference, right?
Sure. I say what? Thirty-seven. Four, four five four.
I'd rather it's ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-five.
Eighty, but maybe eight three.
Eighty-five.
Hey, you're, have we paid I three B yet? So we're gonna have to budget the I three B stuff.
I think it's, so, I mean, in my mind.
Make sure they know about it.
All this number.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have some.
Hey Todd, we still got the IV three contract coming up that we're gonna have to pay to.
I don't know what it's going to be yet.
I three, um.
I three verticals?
Um, yeah, and there's a couple, another item I wanted to throw out. Um, we got, we don't understand the cost of I three vertical yet, or Civic Plus. Try to think if there was another one I was thinking of.
I'm not, say Civic Plus is one-time of like three five hundred, I believe it was.
For the initial setup.
Yeah, but that included like the initial setup and then it's follow-on yearly, I think we're always on a twenty-four hundred bucks a year or something, I can't remember, I'll talk to you.
Yeah, it's on, uh, the second page under administrative, under marketing costs, line one twenty-six. Like the actual ones, fifty-four, eighty-seven, fifty.
One one twenty-six. Of the website. I'm sure I understand the page.
Yeah, then you got domain name servicing, the website hosting. The website hosting is what we're depending for.
That was, uh.
Civic Plus, so two sixty thousand.
We got a month.
Probably.
Oh, one twenty-six, I'm sorry. I think there's, that's, like, there is gonna be an upfront fee, and I'm not sure, I'd have to go back and do what the, we look at the documents, or go back to Civic Plus to see what the annual fee or the monthly fee is gonna be, because there was a.
That's two sixty-five.
I only assume it's two sixty-five, oh. Um.
I mean, is that about two in?
Did you say?
We're two sixty-five times twelve, it's thirty-one eighty.
Yeah, without us looking at the contract, we're sitting here spinning around.
Yeah.
The facts of what it actually was, what the contract is.
I mean, if we've already signed the contract, why don't we have that?
I'm sure we do, it's just not in the contract.
Just on the, that's right.
Harder to claim.
I'm telling you, it's a work in progress. Same thing with I three vertical. And the billing for the, uh,
The contracts, right.
And there's one other item here, um, and I knew about this, wasn't quite sure. Um, we talked about the, uh, Wiregrass Economic Development, um, that organization. Um, that probably slipped my mind about five months ago, but there is a, uh, most of the people that do partake in that do pay them. Um, and Mr. Quinlan, who was, uh, who was coming to explain this, uh, probably before you were here, um, is requesting that we pay a hundred dollars a month for, um, membership in Wirestra- Wiregrass Economic Development Organizations. Now, I've been with him, he's worked very closely with me, we're still, uh, in the process of trying to figure out how and when we could do something on the grocery side of the house, but I plan on approaching him, like we discussed at the last meeting, of the commercial sites that we have available in town, uh, along the highway. Um, I don't think that, uh, joining this organization at a hundred dollars a month, uh, well, I think that's gonna help, help us. You know, cause then we are part of this organization, we basically been working with you for about eight months pro bono then, because we're not an actual member of this organization.
I agree, I mean, if we don't bring in any economic development, how can we ever have more money coming to the town? Sometimes you gotta spend money every time.
So I'll put that forward to the council at the, at the, at the regular meeting. But that's about a four hundred dollar.
I think it's worth it.
Be that we go under administration. Lots of comments on the Wiregrass, just adding that in and we'll get an improvement, approval at the next meeting. And, yeah, just ought to remember, they're, they are having a meeting coming up, and I think two of the council members wanted to attend.
You gotta give me a, a hand, so, I need like a, a date. I know you said it was Wednesday, but Wednesday's like seven thirty in the morning, but I'm gonna need to have which.
It is going, I can, you know, if you wanna take a note.
Excellent, wasn't it?
Yeah, it is gonna be. October ninth, it's zero seven thirty.
I know, you're my girl.
Okay.
But you were supposed to send us where it's gonna be dropped.
Okay, I'll get that, I'll, I'll get you the address for you. It's over in the, it's over in the industrial park, uh, right up at one sixty-seven. But I'll get you the address.
Thank you.
Again, I'm new to this, so where do we go next? Rough number?
Yeah.
Gonna see where.
So if, uh, if I'm a mayor, so for the council, I've looked at the, the audits from previous years, starting in twenty nineteen through twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Twenty twenty-one's the latest one they have available to us. But here's just some idea of like, the administrative budget, the expenditure in twenty nineteen, it's like two twenty-seven. Then it goes up to two fifty-eight in twenty twenty, and then three seventy-two in twenty twenty-one. So each, there's been substantial growth in each one. Back in nineteen, uh, like the police department, like thirty-five, thirty-nine, one sixty and one ninety-four. But they're all sort of increasing in the same, not the same amount, but the same spacing. But the total expenditures for the town went from twenty nineteen was five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight. Again, this is myself looking at these numbers, not a calendar. And then it went to in twenty twenty, the total expenditures for the town was six thirty-eight, six thirty-nine. And then in twenty twenty-one, it was eight thirty-eight, five ninety-four. And that's, that's the final numbers we got, which include from one. Now, this does not include the water department. That's just, uh, the stuff that we're responsible for.
Okay.
So it's, it, what is that telling us?
That we're on track?
Uh, I don't know.
We aren't that bad.
It's substantially increased every year.
Do we know what it's been, it's been increased up?
Yeah, like one year, they had, they doubled the, the general fund doubled, but it was, um, imparted by the, the benefits of, of the.
That was, that was in some.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
I guess we make.
Do we wanna look at, again, go through all these numbers? Um, I don't think it's something I need to.
We need to come up with proposals, like we had the baseline numbers. Um, I think we need the administrative part to make sure that they're accurate as far as, uh, the income here. And then now we go into the proposals of if, where we need to cut, or where we need to make adjustments to get the needs of the town met versus the wants. Because so far, we, and we haven't talked about anything of the town growth, putting back in savings or anything like that. So, you know, we're like eighty-something thousand or whatever it was, well, you know? That's, that's not a lot, that's one, one small hiccup in the plan.
Well, I'm saying, do we want to, uh, again, solidify these numbers before we even start looking at payroll?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's how you're gonna have to come up with.
Yeah. We can try, try to, um, print the numbers on, on payroll to see where, what numbers we have, to see if we're gonna be solvent enough to do payment increases. Yeah, right?
So is the goal here for the town to come up to with like departmental budgets? Like, say, we say X department has two hundred thousand, and then you have that department manager, that, that's his, he gets the needs of the town met within that budget, uh, and has to stick to it.
I would say that'd be a good goal, yes. You know, basically, there's only between me and the police chief.
Well, I mean, that, that part falls on you of creating department heads and, like, you, uh, get more of the guys in the street department. You know what I mean? Uh, however you need to do it on the management side, I would give.
Basically falls on me.
Yeah.
For monitoring the senior center and just monitoring the police department.
That's what I'm saying, we come up with a budget for each department.
Well, that's.
You stay within your means.
We've come up with, basically, what we've done tonight is that.
So now we, now we just need the financial forecast of what it looks like. So you all go back to the drawing board, me personally, I would come up with a SWOT analysis, where you got your strengths, your weaknesses, your opportunities, your threats, you know, whatever it is, home finances, then you come back for that continuity, so that we can make sure that we're gonna function and the central services are gonna be there. So we aren't coming back to this, and hey, will the police departments be in this mound? If that's not the case, so, that's what we're saying.
And I think this solidifies the importance of like A L M, when you say, this process should've started like in March.
Months ago, yeah.
It talks about in there preparing a budget, this should, this process should begin in July, September, November, December. But like you said, we'll learn what A R.
So the plan going forward is we need to come up with a, a clean copy of all this. And, and then we're gonna be looking at how we can, um, manage that with the workforce. Cause I think what we've done here basically gives us a working document, a budget offer. And as we go through the year, if you have eleven thousand dollars for maintenance, and, you know, we're doing that correctly, by the end of the year, we should be at zero zero. And that's why that falls on me, the chief, senior center, and to monitor them, and I have administrative and the street department.
Who are the chief executives?
Pardon me?
You are the chief executives.
Well, yeah, except they have their own budgets, and I monitor that one. The other, the other is the administrative and the street department. Cause there is no leadership position in the street department, no supervisor. Now, let's, should hire one of them.
Good luck. Good luck with that one.
Good luck with that one.
And I think that would have to happen at the next meeting.
Yeah, that's definitely.
That's not. I think that's a, it's a point of con, point of discussion to do just what you said, and that was the plan, that's, that's Monday. Isn't it? This is the first meeting one week from today?
Yes.
I think we have to make every single, we have this one.
Yes.
Yeah, but, uh.
I probably would not let it, honestly.
Me, I wouldn't either. I wouldn't either.
Because then that's a week, that something else could happen.
Absolutely.
And.
It's a huge liability.
Yeah.
If one thing happens, we're here about it because it's been brought to us. So it'd be poor leadership for us to make this not pay as we are discussing.
I, it's a special meeting, yeah, you can only discuss what's on the agenda.
I mean, taking things that's part of the budget is important.
I think a motion to go into executive session.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
And the mayor's office, I bet.
Mm-hmm, it's the only place you got?
Hey, before we go, once you end it, so we'll leave some public comments. Are we not gonna do that?
Shouldn't be.
I've, I've said you're reading it.
Yeah, we're gonna do it, we, we're coming back.
If I didn't mistake you, I would not run up on all of this.
Well, the special meeting was specifically for budget.
Yes, sir, I understand. I, I listened every bit of it, line by line, council comments, public comments, mayor comments, adjournments. So basically what you're saying is I've actually been listening to two hours of this. Then you're gonna go and do a special session in there where nobody else gets to hear anymore, which is good, cause I don't wanna hear any more of it anymore.
But this is a whole different topic here.
I got it, but you're gonna put public comments on there, it's cause it's hard to say so.
And, um, and I've got no problem with doing public comments in the meeting, going to the, to the executive session, why not do that?
That's up to you, I mean, you just need to control your meeting.
I understand.
You know, we haven't even got the council comments. If you wanna let them talk now, let them talk, but tonight, you don't have to let them talk now, it's up to you, you're the mayor.
I'm gonna let the couple of comments go, go ahead. Just state your name.
Okay. I'm Mike Moore, I live in Mayberry, born and raised in this town. I really, I got one comment, one question. I came tonight because I was concerned, all week, on social media, I had people calling me, talking about we're gonna disband, he brought the police department. So I showed up, cause I had some questions and concerns. Well, you guys being, gonna make me leave tonight with more questions and concerns after this is different. I don't understand how we have a hundred and thirty three thousand dollars in our garbage thing that's dead to us. Some know about it, some don't know about it. And talking about cutting the apartments.
Have you heard any comments at all about cutting departments this evening?
No, sir, I have not.
Thank you very much, there were a lot of rumors that flew last week.
That's right.
And that's one of the reasons why I stated in the very beginning of the meeting that there was a four hundred and forty thousand dollars debt was not accounted for, which is why that discussion even ever, and it wasn't, wasn't even about disbanding the police department, it was about contracting out law enforcement, sheriff's office.
Got it, which, that also concerns me, because I'm not the mayor, and I'm not a council member. But if you'd have put a piece of paper in my partner's hand and said this town was four hundred thousand dollars in the hole, I would've said that's bull crap, that's no way that's right. Then, so whoever put the piece of paper in front of you to save you four hundred thousand dollars in the hole, and then you show up to a meeting in a public forum, and people hear it, it should've never gotten that far. Somebody up there should've known we was not four hundred thousand dollars in the hole. It's got to be some kind of typo here.
Did you understand what I said at the start of this meeting? We're a work in progress.
Yes, sir, I got it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, I'll, my fault.
Yes.
Okay, Mike, it was me that made the comment at the last meeting. That several meetings ago, somebody said that towns our size usually contract out. So when I seen that the police department was, their budget was three hundred and fifty thousand, and then I see how far we're in the hole, I just asked, was that something we should look into? And that, then I was told that that would mean we wouldn't always have a police unit here, which I didn't know. It was simply a question I had, cause, you know, I'm brand new, I don't know what I'm talking about.
And I understand you not knowing when you ran on there with four hundred thousand dollars in the hole, I got it, you've been here a few months. But there's people on that council up there that should've known you brought them, not four hundred thousand dollars in the hole.
No, you're reading, you're reading that wrong, we weren't in the hole. We were talking about a four hundred thousand dollar deficit, which after reviewing a number of documents, we didn't have.
But you should've known there was an error.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is that's such a great of error that somebody should've said, before we go to opponents of this, we might need to question this.
First off, it was brought to us in a public forum, right? So that was the point of bringing it up, that we need to go back and look at.
Right.
But I will tell you, I, some of you lived here a long time, until you get up here and see what's behind the curtain, it's a whole different story.
Oh, I can understand that.
This is the first, this is the first time in seven years that since I've been here, that they've done a line item budget.
Right.
And there is no control.
Right.
That's the point of doing this.
Right.
Um, and I will tell you, my, my personal goal for this is that if we can hand this off to the next council, and you simply had, know what your ordinancees are, which you don't, cause there's nowhere to find them, and have a budget.
Right.
Then we can hand this off to somebody else.
Right.
More than happy to hand that baton out. So that's, I mean, we, we are at the foundational level of getting this place back on track.
So we've kinda been running it, we didn't have a budget done up last year or the year before, it's kinda just running on.
For a municipality of our size, there's no legal requirement to have a budget.
Yeah, that's just smart business practice.
Absolute, one hundred percent, that's why we're doing it.
We are saying that isn't a good practice.
Yeah.
And so, nobody ever wanted to take away the police department, I love the chief, I love to be able to pick up the phone and call him and tell him my concerns. But when you have to look at, okay, in two years, our town's gonna be bankrupt, we're not gonna have a town to have a police department. You gotta look at those things, so again, it was never, it, it didn't go for a vote, most people didn't agree, once we found out the logistics, that was as far as it went, so what was posted on Facebook was a little bit of misinformation and a little misconstrued. And we're sorry that that happened, we, you know, anytime you can pick up the phone and call any of us, and we'll be having to answer, I had several people that got to me and messaged me and say, Celine, are y'all trying to get rid of the police department? And we're not, it was just, we have to look at the whole picture whenever you're trying to budget for an entire town.
Any other comments from anybody else, before we do what we need to do here very quickly?
I have a question as a concerned employee. The very first line on that very first page of the budget includes council raises, mayor raise to two thousand four hundred dollars, council to one thousand two hundred dollars, is that still included in the budget?
For the year, that's not even a raise, mayor gets two hundred dollars a month.
Yes, and that works out to eighty four thousand, but those numbers over there with the asterisk beside it are raises, those are proposed raises. And that's what I'm asking. Eighty four hundred, excuse me, but those asterisk, look, right here.
We haven't.
Can you show me your first page really quick?
Listen, I don't think our ninety one dollars a month is a very big concern. It's definitely enough to be able, give me a little bit.
We're gonna, yeah, anything with.
But we not get our raise, we don't care about.
Mayor, two thousand four hundred dollars, council twelve hundred, mayor pro temp twelve hundred. So are you guys going to give yourselves these raises?
That hasn't even been decided.
It's not, it's not, it's not a raise.
That is a raise.
What's the, what's the raise?
That's the annual salary.
Okay, because there's been talk that the council, that it wanted to be put before the council. Can I finish my question, please? Thank you. It's been put before, can I please finish my question, Ms. Fay, without you interrupting me? Thank you.
Quiet, please.
Um, it's been brought up in the office that council and mayor ra, need raises, and they want more than what they're getting now. And I'd just like to know if the council's going to get a raise.
I, I think I could speak for all of the council members when I say that none of us are here for, for any monetary gains that we're here.
Eric, has it not been discussed in the office?
No, in all, in all discussion on raises will be, and across the board, I think we'll be discussed as we look at these numbers and look at them a little bit closer.
We never, none of us ever signed up for this for monetary gain.
Did we not discuss council raises in our office several times?
Who's, who's this that we're asking?
It's been brought up. Correct, that's what I'm asking, are they going to budget for their raises too?
Any other comments from the? We're gonna go into the executive session.
Eric, Eric, log the time, log the time.
Thank y'all for coming.
Dale.
The council of Patty and Park, Allen didn't.
No, I know, Allen knows, so I know I would have a raise for a raise. But it's been talked about in our office up there that they wanted to propose council raises.
And it was been denied, because.
Not they, not they, just they chug, yeah, that's what it's talked about, and they keep bringing it to the council. So the council doesn't say anything, that's my husband is on there, and I know he did for the raise.
I answered something, I, I never, I never said they asked for a raise, I said it was on the ballot in my office. But even if they talk about it, they have to propose it, and it was been declined, because they're not, they have monetary gains on board. Not people.
Oh, you mean, and, so, so it'd be.
So this was not right.
You should've asked, what we have a council. The question is that you promised to build for people for a visit, for a service that was. They did not, they didn't do that, it's not. So your wish for a salary that doesn't be municipal, it's probably a little difficult, so say, can you report, and you tell me how valuable, and you know. The only thing I thought about, I mean, the police, uh, have a more operating, uh, it's like, I just, I just. Or a reconciliation, that's for, yeah. Because he read it, because I read it in the minutes, and I was probably going about being a hundred percent interest, and he said, no, that's more like a thousand percent interest. So I know for a fact that it's discussed, it's a genuine.
But most of my jobs have been in my offices, but this time it's not, it allows me to work alone. But I work at home.
I can't, I can't come over, I can't.
Oh, actually, the, the headquarters probably building is in the region of. It's general and average, um, they actually have lots of nails, so that's where Alan works. And he does, he's like the fence, so. The same, had, the same company with different divisions. So he's, yeah.
Everything. And my attorney.
I get that numbers, it's something in a different layout. Need to do a background investigation. We're in the cash flow, which are not looking, looking at. I don't think so, but it's not actually. I don't think it's real, because I mean, I mean, they say they're for, they're for. That might.
They haven't had, they had asked, and they were saying that, that's why I asked if they were going to give themselves raises, is why.
Cause they haven't even brought up this subject this way.
Is why, I asked, are we going to give ourselves raises, because Chuck was adding it. Nobody's getting raises, but you know, you see, nobody is offering to give up their pay either, like the administration did when Kathy took over. How many months did the administration offer up their pay, so they, three, four, five years? Now that part of the thing is damn sure ain't giving nothing up either, already.
No, no.
I know that.
It's personal, it's, it's got to still go.
They actually, has played every game. Even though they're executive. It's the button. Um. Well, my neighbor just had to count all those minutes that I go, and he was reading in there about the, the raises, and at least the one that told me that that was a thousand percent guaranteed, is how I know for a fact that it's been publicly discussed.
No, I know Alan doesn't, he's not even ever gonna. He didn't expect any of that, that was just a surprise.
I don't work. It, look, it was in minutes, it was publicly discussed. I handed those minutes over to District Attorney Tarbox, and he's viewed them too. It was discussed right here in an open meeting.
How many years ago?
Just a few months ago, was it not?
No, it was never discussed.
Eric, no, you're on. Wasn't it before Alan got on?
In the council.
Alan's.
It was discuss, even Eric just said it was discussed before Alan got on.
No, I remember when, that's when the old mayor was getting ready to leave, resign or whatever he did. So, there's someone brought up, and I remember saying, oh, they want to talk about raises, and then, then the discussion happened. They can't talk about raises until they have a budget in place.
And let's talk about how long we have, we wanted the council to be set, ask for a public, finally, and he given it.
They've been getting them. They got a budget in twenty twenty-one. I gave Alan a copy of all of that stuff, and he came into the office the other day. Yes, that was the old, look, I'm, okay, excuse me, it was twenty twenty-two that they gave a budget for.
Okay, Eric, uh, for the minutes, uh, the council went into executive session to review, uh, a document that, uh, pertain to the administration of the, uh, town.
All the administration?
Yes, we'll run in the minutes. That's the place, is that what you said? So once more, the, uh, town council meeting is scheduled for next Monday. I don't have any other comments, cause it'll be covered, I think, just about everything, reference the, uh, line item budget. Any other council comments?
No, next Monday would be October seventh.
Right. And that's the standard, regular, uh, council meeting. These numbers on, uh, clean paper for review, and then, uh, we'll go from there. Motion to adjourn? Come on, let's stand by.
No, I get, I get very down public comments, just because I just wanna make sure they got their comments out with this.
We asked, I asked if there were any others.
Motion to adjourn in a second.
Yes.